Good evening. Being October 28, 2021. This is the Kuschnit Planning Board. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You kind enough to introduce yourselves, starting with Doug, please?
Uh, Doug Mantle, town planner.
Dave Devignan, member.
Rick Ellis, member.
Ryan DeShamps, member.
Mark Sanorizio, member.
With that, this being, meeting is being audio and videotaped for Mass General Law. Your business discussion, this A&R plan for Perry Hill Road, Kuschnit Assessors Map 9, Lot 18A. The plan and accompanying documentations are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, Pottling Way's building, 1030 Main Street, first floor. This is a continuation of a public hearing, is that correct?
Uh, the first one, nope. It's, uh, A&R Plan of Land, so I have the document right here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna step out of the room for...
No problem. We understand completely.
It was nice knowing you.
That was short, man. Short and sweet.
Can I do that too?
I wanna do it. If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir, and tell us why you're here and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Show us that handsome face.
I got some, uh, plans here with Matt Leoni, with Schneider Devignan Leoni. And here tonight with an A&R plan for Russ DeBois, for his property located on Perry Hill Road. Known, as you said, Mr. Chairman, as, uh, Lot, uh, ETA on Assessors Map 9. Um, the, uh, which would be the current configuration of the entire lot here. The plan tonight is to divide off of the westerly portion of the lot, shown here on as, uh, Lot 8. Proposed lot consists roughly of fifteen and a half acres of wooded upland and wetland. Um, the proposed lot will have approximately 318 feet of frontage along Perry Hill Road, uh, which exceeds the minimum 150 feet, uh, in the Residence A District. Um, the lot will also well exceed the, uh, minimum 60,000 square feet of upland, excuse me, of total area, and 40,000 square feet of contiguous upland. The remaining land, which is shown here in yellow, um, consists of about 27.4 acres, uh, which comprises, uh, Mr. DeBois's home at 120 Perry Hill Road. Uh, it will consist of, uh, open fields and mix of woodland and upland, uh, there's currently inactive bogs on the property as well. This lot, uh, will also, um, have, um, 303 feet of frontage, which is again more than 150 required, and will well exceed the, uh, upland and, uh, and, uh, total area requirements.
Excuse me, did you say active or inactive?
Inactive.
Thank you.
Inactive, yes. The box, yep.
Um, is the intent to create a building lot of, I can't read the number, Lot 3, whatever the, that green outline, what?
Lot green here? Yes, Lot 8, yes.
Lot 8?
Yes.
Um, what do you propose to use as the buildable part, or the, where would the building be located?
Building would be located, if it was a single-family dwelling, it would be located sit, I would assume centrally in the, in the upland area.
How would you plan to access that?
We would be accessing off of Perry Hill Road, we would be, uh, be required to have a wetland crossing here. Um, we've done the calculations, it'd be approximately, uh, it would be under the 5,000-square-foot threshold of wetland alteration, um, which is permitted all the time through the Conservation Commission, and we have plenty of upland to replicate there. Um, my, I don't know what will happen with this when the new owner buys it, whether the new owner will come in with a common driveway, there is potentially more than one lot here, um, or if it will just be, um, utilized as a single-family ST lot.
Any of this in Chapter 61A of B?
No.
Gentlemen? Do we need to fit that square up front? Yeah, how much is the frontage, what'd you say, 380?
The square, the square is here, I do have it on there.
Okay.
The 150, the 150 depth by, uh, 150 width, yep.
Great. And the total frontage was all like 318 or something?
Uh, to be exact, it's 317.7.
Okay.
Yep. And the existing lot will, uh, the remaining land will also have 303 feet of frontage, and will obviously deal with that.
And what was the remainder of that land, how many acres? Is any of that in Chapter, do you know?
I believe not. At one time it was, uh, he, Russ had it all under Chapter, uh, 61A, but I believe it's all, that's all been taken care of, he's done multiple subdivisions on the lands since, uh, since that's been done.
You just understand if it's under 61A of B, your first right of refusal for the town, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, right.
Guys, pretty simple, anything?
Um, I mean, it'll be interesting if you come in and try to do...
A common driveway.
A common driveway with multiple lots back there. I mean, that's, uh, I think that, that seems like that might be a little on the optimistic side, in terms of multiple lots, um...
Yeah, I, like I said, I, I'm not involved in any of the later, what may happen, I'm just saying that that's, you asked what the access with, that that's a possibility, is that, they could also come in with a, a Form B, um, preliminary subdivision, talk to the board about doing something in that, in that nature, um, or the common driveway, or like I said, it could just be a, uh, state law.
Well, I mean, it meets the requirements for a Form A plan.
Yep. Doug, you got any questions on this one?
Nope.
I, I would just, I, you know, this is the third, uh, lot we've seen like that. This particular one, I mean, it... Access at some point is going to become an issue. I mean, quite, quite frankly, uh, I mean, if you're talking about Form As that are supposed to show some form of access from the street, uh, it would appear on the surface of it that this has none. Um, as have a couple of other ones. You know, we've given like a little bit on some of these lots before. I don't know how much more willing I'm willing to, to bend on those things. I would be very disappointed if, uh, or maybe not quite so amenable to a multiple lot division of land back there.
How many acres is that whole piece right there that we're talking about?
Lot 8 is 15 and a half.
15.5?
Yes, lot 8, 15...
Nope, that's fine, you don't have to get technical, 15's good.
I don't know, I'll make a motion to approve the plan as submitted.
For an A&R plan?
For the A&R plan, yeah, I mean, that's all that's in front of us right now.
Right.
Uh, with, with caution that, uh, that may be difficult, difficult to, uh, to develop.
Do what we know.
Is there a second?
I second, Doug.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, Rick, Ryan, and Mark. With that, do you have all the A&R stuff, the plans, the nine copies, the Mylar, everything we need?
Yes.
Okay. Just put them in between here.
I, I, I mean, it's, it's a large-scale plan, that, it's 130 feet, that's not much. Like I said, this is, this is kind of a, this lot's kind of pushing it.
We gotta keep profile away from our driveway.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's kind of gets a little narrow right there.
That's okay.
I have the width there. I have to go along with what these are being provided with this. Yeah, is there a question? At the course of... Between the wetland, the course of that, it's fine.
You work today?
Yep.
Yeah. How many trees have they moved down there?
Yeah, they want me to go and give a yes. No way.
You got a pen, Rick?
I just tucked one up here.
I can see us putting a trail, having a trailer unload, once he gets that load up in the air and that wind grabs it, he's on his side.
What's the date of date of date of today, 10?
28.
As always, would you go to registry deeds and register the registry of deeds, we like a book on the page, just call one of us, or call Doug, so we know that. We'll see if he puts that in file. There you go, brother. Next time you order some pens, the ones to do on the Mylar?
Yeah.
Get the skinny one. Skinny, fine one.
They have a skinny one, too.
Yeah, there's one right there. And if not, there's, uh, also a box in that, uh, scuffing around.
No problem. I got my fat hands. With that, while they're signing that, oh, welcome back. While we're signing all these, discussion ground-mounted solar array 0 and 88 winged lens, discussion on comments from the building inspector. Did everybody get a copy of that letter from the building inspector?
I did, I have not read it as of yet.
While we're signing these...
I'm working on it.
That's fine.
I'm good.
Huh?
I'm good. I got it.
Okay. Just this next one, gentlemen, I had a chance to read a, the letter from the building department?
Yeah.
Yes.
All set on that?
Yep.
Uh, with that, ground-mounted solar array 088, we made a discussion on comments from building inspector. Doug, do you have anything that you want to tell us on this?
Uh, no, we're not, so the property is past week, and they have made progress in terms of visual, visual barrier, they mulched over and weeded everything, um, they've replaced the dead apervites, but it's still insufficient in terms of creating visual barrier, I feel like the board would like to see. Um, as Jim had requested in that, placing the nylon fence in, in place, just to prevent the visual barrier up, up along that and then up on the property as well.
Gentlemen, how do you feel about it? I know as Jim being the zoning enforcement officer, when it comes to...
Have we got a plan here? Show where the, where these, uh, visual barriers are?
Yes.
Well, they put the berm up, but they didn't put the trees on the berm, they put the trees on the outside or the inside of the berm, is that correct?
Uh, so they were on the inside of the berm, and on the plan, it shows that they're on top of the berm, however, they also spoke and were working with, and collab with, uh, UMass Dartmouth.
Yeah.
Where they were gonna put native species staggered with the apervites.
Yeah.
So pretty much the way it looks right now is you have the berm, the center cuts right down the middle, you'll have a decent space between the two apervites, and then on the other side of the berm, you'll have a native species plant, um, so...
That makes sense, because the apervites are about eight, 10 feet on center.
Uh, right now, they're four feet on center.
Those aren't four feet along the road. Those are more than four feet apart.
Oh, uh, Wing Lane?
Wing Lane, yeah.
I can pull up the plan.
Uh, they're supposed to be four feet on center.
Well, that's...
I went down, they're like eight, 10 feet on center, and some of them are two feet high. Plan says four feet high.
Yeah.
I mean, they went, what was it, a level, I guess, but...
On by the conditions, the board...
That's what's on sale.
That's right. So, condition number four, the board reserves a right in accordance with the regular requirements of MGL 40A, Section 9, and the zoning bylaws, and following a public hearing to notify any portion of the special permit where it is deemed that the public interest and purpose of the regulations would be served.
Well, they're supposed to be four-foot-high apervites, four feet on center, and they're not, well then, there's a problem.
Simple as that. I think we just, uh, let Jim and Doug after, Doug's gotta get on his feet, otherwise they'll chase him out of there with his grudges.
Yeah. I mean, just do what they said they would do?
Yep.
Or provide an alternative?
Right over your head, Rick.
Sorry, oh, sorry.
That's a smaller one for now.
Yeah, yes, and one to let it show. Supposed to be on three sides, they have it on three sides, but...
It's just they did it improperly, they didn't put it on top of the berm, and they didn't do it...
The one on the right side running down the, uh, south? They're on, they're on the downhill side of the berm, which defeats the purpose of the berm. The, uh, the one across the row, they're on, it's on the berm, but right now, they got 10 feet on center, and, and half the trees weren't four feet tall.
Yep.
I don't know if they think they're taking averages or something.
Well, what's it, they had a challenge with UMass, or UMass is working with them, to plant some other trees in between or something?
I, I mean, my, my take on it is do it the way they said they were gonna do it, or provide something that the building inspector is happy with, I mean...
I...
Doug, do we have proof that they have a bond in place for this decommissioning?
There isn't.
There isn't?
I have the document, it hasn't, the one I have hasn't been signed.
This thing's huge, what was the number?
Uh, it's sleeping on the period over there.
I thought, I thought, I thought they weren't supposed to be able to get a permit to build until they posted the bond, until they posted the cash, I don't...
That's how it should be, yes.
Well, I mean, I thought that's the way ours...
It should be.
That's what everybody's been telling me, that's in these special conditions. I mean, if they haven't, if they haven't posted the necessary surety, I wouldn't give these guys anything.
Right.
I mean, they were, this was the one that was rolling, they were rolling rocks into the detention basin? So they have not, they have not given the clerk $132,000?
No. Uh, there's only, currently out of all the solar fields, there's only been one that has posted a bond, um, posted anything in terms of decommissioning, and it was a, um, irrevocable line of credit. And as of right now, the treasurer, uh, said she will not accept that.
Okay.
Is that on 588 Middle?
Yes.
Okay. They're still working on that, huh?
Yes.
I, I mean, if, if the bond hasn't been posted, he hasn't done the plantings that he was supposed to do, you know, he's been rolling bowlers into the detention pond, I mean, it's almost like we're, we're talking about a cease and desist.
At this point, yes.
Yeah. I mean...
Otherwise, they go too far and there's no...
No turning back.
Yeah.
I mean, everything's, everything's done already, uh, they already performed their connection tests.
Yeah, but they haven't...
Yeah, they don't, they have no intention, I don't think they have any intentions of doing any of this stuff. Um, is, what does, what does the connection test mean? What does, you pass that test, what happens? Is, is it actually connected, connected into the grid?
It, it's, that was the test, so the next, next step would be them connecting into the grid at this point, but they're just waiting for the final approval from the planning board, however...
I mean, my, my inclination right now is to issue a cease and desist until he comes into compliance with the conditions, you know, period, I mean, and, uh, that no permanent connection to the grid be made until he complies with all these, all the requirements of the special permit.
Okay.
Including posting of the bond, including the plantings, uh, in the proper size, at the proper size, at the proper spacing, and in the proper location.
Make that as a motion.
Unless he comes in, unless they come in with an approval, with a, with a, an alternative plan, and ask for approval of that alternative plan from the board.
This is what I have for the plantings, um, too, I don't know if you guys want to take a look at this.
Uh, what does it say again?
Do you have a message on my...
Single row of coniferous plantings, four feet on center, minimum four-foot-high plants on the top of the berm. Doesn't comply.
No. I was there today, there's no way, not even close. I could drive a car between the trees, if I can get up over the berm.
Yeah.
Although it's probably too soft.
That's it.
But the bond is more concerning.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Building permits should not have been issued.
No.
You let them go too far with this.
Mm-hmm.
And the town's in jeopardy for holding a bagel.
You got the mechanism to turn that back.
Yeah. I think we have no choice.
Absolutely. Your motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that we issue a cease and desist until the proponent comes into compliance with all the conditions of the special permit, including posting uh, the $132,000 cash, uh, deposit, to be deposited with the treasurer of the town of Kuschnit, and then reworks his plantings, uh, to comply with the plan. If he wants to do something different, he should come in with a different plan and show us what he wants to do.
Okay.
Uh, and I would also, uh, as part of that motion, uh, suggest, suggest, demand that no permanent connection to the grid be made until he comes into compliance with all, with all the conditions of the special permit.
Is there a second?
I second, Doug.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, David years, Rick years, Brian years, Mark years.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, make a follow-up motion that we direct Doug to send a letter to Mr. Merritt, that no, if any other building permits have been issued for solar farms without proof of surety, meaning the bond or cash or whatever?
They shouldn't, they should not, they should, there should be no building or electrical permit issued without that bond being posted.
If we, Doug, if we had got a common thing or a common page for all the decommissioning prices, I know the young lady downstairs who's in the department wants a specific way, is that correct?
Uh, a specific way that we can...
The decommissioning, she wants it a special way, whether it's cash or a bond, I don't think it's a bond, I think it's cash.
Uh, so right now, the treasurer requires cash only, she's only accepting cash in terms of decommissioning.
And I think that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, this says cash, this says cash here.
Yep. Okay, Mike, it, we, I know we're tweaking up some of the 31 rules and regulations for the solar farms, that should be one in there that they have to...
Yeah, they, they should, they, you know, I would...
Right, so there should be one of those, and that, that's right.
I would, I would second the motion that, uh, we send a letter to Bill saying, Mr. Merritt, that, uh, don't issue any building permits until the bond is, or until the surety has been posted satisfactory to the, the town clerk, period. We'll never get it otherwise.
That's right, I agree 100%. I know we've been tweaking it up, and we, Doug is just getting on board with all the stuff and everything, and that was part of one of the things we looked into. Yep, no...
We finally got, we finally got people building them again, I mean, you know, we, most of them have, have not been built, you know?
Can't connect.
Which is good if they're not being required to post a bond.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, to me, the difficulty is, even with a bond, you have to, the entity that issues the bond may not even be... that issues the bond may not even be in place in 20 years. I mean, we've been through situations where banks have been bought out by banks, which have, and have bought out, bought them out with other banks, and, no, it should be in a form that the town clerk agrees is going to no question be available 20 years out.
Okay.
Or, I mean, we've been, we've been told that these things are supposed to be good for around 20 years, and that's the only reason I'm bringing that number out. But, uh, you know, even a bond, a bond isn't necessarily in perpetuity, and you can say that it's automatically renews, but if nobody's gonna pay to remove, renew the bond, it ain't gonna be renewed, you know, and, I, I'm not a real fan of, of bonds.
Okay.
Uh, at least, at least in terms of when we're talking 10 and 20 years out, maybe in terms of two, two to five years, that's another story, but, uh, yeah, not, not, you know, 20 years plus out.
But that, that was a motion by David, seconded by Rick?
Yes, Dave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. You're all set on that one, Doug? Uh, yes, I will have that sent over as soon as possible. Okay, number three, discussion, ground mounted solar array at Robinson's Road, discussion on comments from the building inspector. I don't know if you gentlemen read that portion of the letter from the building inspector, dated Octo, October 20th, 2021, it was in the bottom paragraph.
He mentions 45 poles, is that right?
Oh, 45 feet, a dozen poles.
A dozen poles, 45 feet, okay.
Yeah.
That's an awful lot of poles.
Yeah, and a small area too.
And I can pull up the larger plan for that too, if you'd like to see it.
Well, you don't have to, 'cause it says here, the board of selectmen have authorized the building department to charge $5,000 per pole, but the visual consequences still run out on the rural character and beautiful community, and all the effort should be made to discourage this, paragraph four again, your right to mandate the change. So, we can just mandate a change instead of poles, make them put it underground?
I mean, that's just.
Can we do that though? Since you've already approved.
Uh, they're asking for a special, well, not, not an existing one, but, uh.
Well, under condition number four, I don't know if you read that part, did you?
I did, I did.
Rick, I don't know if you got it, it states, the board reserves the right in accordance with the requirements from MGL 48, section nine, and the zoning bylaws, and following a public hearing to modify any proportion of the special permit where it is determined that the public interest and purpose of its regulations would be served. I believe it's a fine line, but.
And this discussion came up when they brought this in front of us too, about putting it underground.
Yeah. And they didn't want them.
That's right.
Yeah, it's more, it typically is more expensive.
Yeah.
Question I have for this plan that I'm looking at, is the screening adequate?
Was that on Robinson Road?
Yeah. They got sporadic screening, not, you know, the fence, is the fence?
Well, there has to be a fence all the way around it, if it has to be a berm with.
I agree with Jim's assessment of putting a slotted fence where you don't, you know, can hide it, but is that what's on this plan? Because he's right, it is visible, it is, that's a pretty area to drive through and.
That's the first thing you see.
Yeah, it's gonna be solar central.
What would you like, gentlemen, would you give Jim the clap launch to go through with it?
Well, I mean, it's a board decision, if you, if you guys wanna, uh, have a public hearing to modify the special permit, then we're the ones that need to do that.
Then I, I, I don't understand, how the board of selectmen gets authorized the building department to charge $5,000 for four.
Well, that's, we'll leave that up to them.
Also sounds like a tax.
I have no clue.
So, it also sounds like a tax.
Yeah.
I, I always have a tough time with the poles, I mean, I've been, I've been around town too long, I mean, that's all we ever had on that north end of town was roads with poles, you know, so, I don't know, like I said, it, uh.
I don't know why so many, they just have so many in there.
Every 150 feet, maybe?
No, they're all, it's weird, they're all clustered together in this U shape.
How they hook up or something, some sort of array?
Each pole has a different system on it essentially.
Bless you.
That transmits out to the street. So, like, there's a shut-off on one pole, um, transformers on the other pole.
Yeah, they got them all labeled, you're right.
But from other projects we've seen, that can all go underground, and everything can be accessed underground.
Don't worry about winds like we had the other day and blowing the telephone poles all over.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're all like clustered here.
I have to, I have to walk it really to get a better sense of how thick the existing, existing trees and wetland are, I mean.
Now, is that on 105 or is that on the?
Yeah, it's 105, yeah.
Yeah, it's the one right across from the Gwentow.
Yep. But is, do you tell if one pole's right on 105 Robinson Road, or are they down the side of?
No, they go into the property.
Yeah, they're, they're, they go down the side of the property.
Right.
Against the, the wetland and the, the buffer that's, the vegetated buffer that's there right now. I mean, are you gonna see the, the panels from the road? Absolutely.
Yeah, because that actually, uh, the topography goes up from there.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen? What do you think, we do a walkabout or? Or we singularly walk without having a meeting?
You know, I, I, my, my problem is, you know, anything that happens on the property is gonna, you're not, you're not gonna have the field there that you've got right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, and I, I look at these and, as opposed to putting a subdivision on the land, you know, with houses and roads and all that stuff, you know, I, I'm kind of, in my own mind, I look at it as, you know, one or the other. It's, it's, it's not gonna, if there is available upland, at some point, somebody's gonna figure out a way to develop it, because existing owners are gonna be, get tired of paying taxes, or they're gonna die and their kids are not gonna wanna pay the taxes on the property. Uh, and, and, you know, the money is, is an irresistible thing, is an irresistible thing, and if there's a way to make a dollar off the property, you know, us, in these days, other than farming, it's, it's gonna find its way that way. I don't know, to me, to, to me, we, we looked at it already, we approved, did we approve it like this, or is it not approved yet?
We approved it, yes.
I don't know, it's kinda after the fact, I mean, if we're gonna make, I, I think going forward on future ones, you know, we should look at the, the screening probably more closely, I mean, these, these panels are like 10 to 12 feet high at the top, I mean, a six or an eight foot high fence is not gonna screen the things.
It's only a berm.
It's just, yeah, it's just, it's just not gonna happen, you're gonna need like an eight foot berm with, with a fence on top of the berm and, you know, then you might have a, a chance.
Well, we can make sure the trees are the right tall height.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with, I'm with, I'm with you there, you know?
I already got, I, I have these, so these better be five to six. I, I, um, my opinion is, once you've, you've issued the permit, it's hard to really call them back in, they have the option to go underground, they can come back to us if they don't wanna pay.
Well, I mean.
If, if they really aren't gonna get charged, I don't know if that's legal enough.
How many poles you counting then?
Jim said.
Just 12.
12, I counted 11, one, two, three.
Whatever, eight and 10, what's that?
11. There's an existing one, maybe he's counting that one, but it's 55 grand, they might decide to go underground instead, I don't know, 55 plus.
Yeah, that might make it look more palatable.
Make it, make it 10, make it 10 for a pole, just make it big, just big, just make it big enough that they wanna go underground.
There might be, there might be a center to come in.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
Has authorized the building department to charge $5 pole for visual consequence.
I, I, I mean, if you really wanna screen the thing from view, you, you really need a, a six foot high or eight foot high berm with continuous plantings across the top of it next to the road, you know, that's, I mean, most of it that you get seen is, or most of it that's gonna get seen is from the road, uh, 'cause there is no existing vegetative buffer between the road and the field. Uh, I don't, I don't remember offhand what it looks like from pushing lanes.
It's wide open.
Yeah.
It's wide open.
Can't get any more.
There are no trees, none, zero.
I mean, that.
Well-maintained farm field.
That, that, yeah.
You can see that coming down the hill here, you can see right in there.
Yep. Yep. I mean, you're not gonna be able to screen it.
No.
From everything, but at least to screen it from the edge of, from the roads.
The topography's going up from that corner.
You'll never screen it, you know, you'll, you never will.
No.
I mean, it's just, it's just not gonna happen. Trees, the things are canted that way.
The poles might blend into the trees.
I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't really, in terms of the visual, I, I really look at.
It's not like they're, they're over here.
Yeah, that's right.
But the fact that they are.
If you're coming this way, you ain't gonna see them.
They're gonna be up against the trees, and as I recall, I mean, it's a pretty decent stand of trees back there.
Yeah, that's, that's a very heavily wooded area.
The panels, you're gonna see.
Yes.
You see them everywhere though, everywhere.
You know, I, I'm, I'm just saying, I, that's just my opinion, I, I really don't think the poles are that big of a, that big of an issue in terms of the visual aspects of this, certainly compared to the panels that you wanna see.
They don't have the decom, we haven't signed everything on that.
No, they don't even have a connection agreement or anything, like, they, they haven't done anything.
No decommission fee, no nothing?
No, they're currently working with us, it'd be cool to get that.
Okay.
Oh, they haven't worked out a price yet, a final price?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so the project's approved, but subject to?
So, the 31 rules and regulations that we have.
Okay.
Which we're trying to standardize, I think Doug has been doing a good job on it, but he's gotta get, the financial thing challenges when somebody changes down there, it changes the way they want the money, whether they want a bond or they want cash.
And there's another change coming at 31st of the year.
Yeah, okay, so.
I just saw that.
We can just keep trying. With that, we leave that one alone then, so you gentlemen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not ready to, to, to do another special permit process for poles that are up against 60 foot high trees.
But going forward, we might wanna.
Uh, I would say going forward, I, you know, if, if we're really interested in the visual impacts of things, then we gotta really look a lot more closely at larger berms and heavier plantings, uh, at least next to the roads.
Right.
I mean, just like this city in New Bedford did with the, uh, the solar array up near the, uh, up near the waterworks, you know, if you, I forget the name of the street, I've only been by it a million times.
North, or two, North Avenue turns into, yeah.
Yeah, it's a massive.
Yeah, you go, you go one way, it's North Avenue, I don't, I don't know if it, if you go the other way, it's North Avenue.
It's up to the line it is, so, when the line changes, that's where North Avenue went.
I would suggest to the rest of the board that you go take a look at that, if you really, if we're, if screening of the facility is really an issue, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, 'cause you can't see that one.
I'd climb the hill just to see what was on the other side.
Right, exactly. Can't see it.
Yeah.
And there are trees along the bank too.
Yeah, they did a good job on that one, I'm proud of you, they really did a good job.
I, I would, I would suggest that that may be a, uh.
Maybe if you get time, once your leg gets here, go out, take a picture of that one.
Okay.
Okay, and that way, this is what, the way we want it from this point forward.
All right.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, I mean, do it up front, you know, rather than after the fact.
We all set with that one?
I am, I'm good.
Okay, understand where we're coming from on that one, Doug?
Yep, absolutely.
Old business, signed documents, ground mounted solar array, 550 Main Street, request for a reduction in cash surety, signed documents.
Have them right here, that was what we agreed upon last time, which was, where is it, 65,250, um, I just need two of them signed, uh, by the board, I guess David can't sign these.
No, I can't, I do have a question, what does that mean, uh, request for a reduction?
So, this was the one that we split the difference, wasn't it?
Yeah, so they, they started out with a two megawatt facility.
Right.
Ever source came back and told them, we'd like to see you reduce the size to one megawatt.
Okay.
So, pretty much, whatever the reduction and the land disturbance.
Oh, okay.
They cut it in half.
So, you're agreed to.
We figured that out, yeah.
They're not asking for a reduction now, you agreed to the reduction?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good. Obviously, I can't sign anything. Is that way up?
Yeah, I mean, this one specifically says, provide deposits of money. To me, that's the, I mean, that's, that's the easiest, that's the, that's the cleanest way to do it, you know, if it's cash, at least then you only gotta cost a living, you know, issue to deal with, but at least it's available.
Yeah, back in the woods.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. That Carol's place?
Yes.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Rick?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, you flip it over and sign it?
The golf driving range?
Oh, on the back.
Yep, that's gonna be a solar field.
Right, they, they, they're starting demos.
Yeah.
Do they have a bond in place?
Uh, they're in the process of doing it, we have the document signed, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or cash surety?
Yeah.
'Cause I actually saw they, they took down the.
Yeah, they've been liking talks with me, 'cause.
Think you have two there, Rick, is there another one?
So, I've had like a few companies that have just had issues with place of cash, they wanna do a bond or irrevocable line of credit, so, to me, I understand from their point of view of also, on our end of things, we'd like the cash.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the 20 year thing is kinda, it's.
That's a long.
Yeah. They don't renew it because the panels are working fine, they let it go for 25, and then you got nothing.
With that, our next one is 0165 Nice Lane, public hearing continuation, we have people out here for that one?
I believe so, yeah, I don't know if, uh, the developers here, Robert.
Did they ask for a continuance?
It might have been my mess, I don't, I might have forgot to call him, that the meeting got rescheduled, I called him last week to let him know the meeting was canceled, I don't know if he checked back on the website though.
Let me just double check, make sure they're here or not. 0165 Nice Lane? Nope, 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 okay.
I mean, I make a motion, we continue to the next meeting and notify the proponent that he needs to be here, if he wants us to act on it.
With that, do we have any discussion on it, leave it like that?
Yeah.
Bring it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Sorry to bring you guys in.
Nothing else better to do. The Red Sox in the World Series.
While we're here, when's the next meeting, when you wanna make it, in November? Today is the 28th, Thanksgiving's the 25th, the week before Thanksgiving, the 18th?
It's okay on me.
Me too.
18? Eighteen?
Yeah.
Six-thirty? Same time, same place, same channel? There we go. With that, if you'd be kind enough to notify them, they'll come back. I know we have some things we'd like to discuss with that one, but we will not do it without him here, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Rick made a motion to continue, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Sorry about that, guys, if you could come out. Next is three oh one Perry Hill Road, public hearing. Form C subdivision for four lot development on three oh one Perry Hill Road, for Mark Francois applicant, China Divigent and Leonie Incorporated, Metapoiset, Mass. This plan is located and established in ancient way, which predates subdivision control regulations. The plans and the company documentation are available for the inspection at town clerk's office, Spottineway Building, one thirty first, one thirty Main Street, first floor. With that, gentlemen?
Good evening. Matt Leonie again, Schneider Divigent and Leonie. We're gonna continue the discussion on Perry Hill Estates. Since our, uh, our last meeting, um, we received a final letter from S W Cole, who was the peer reviewing engineers, uh, stating that everything has been, or their concerns have been satisfactorily, satisfactorily addressed. Plans have been presented to the Conservation Commission, and we received Conservation Commission approval and a stormwater permit approval on the meeting, uh, nine twenty-one, uh, of the last month. And, uh, the board did ask for a draft of an easement, uh, allowing the Northerly of Butter to utilize the, um, proposed section of the, uh, roadway, and, uh, we do have.
This board or Conservation?
Uh, just this board.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so I, I do have a copy of that, uh, in draft form that you guys can review. Uh, I can submit to you, but I don't know if you've gotten this via email or not.
Uh, the S W Cole, yeah, I haven't emailed.
S W Cole, but no, I'm in the E, did he, did he?
I haven't received it either.
Okay.
I mean, the easement, probably, uh, town council will take a look at it anyway, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And, uh, that is, that kinda catches us up from where we were, um, last month.
I don't think we had any challenge, we've pretty much said on what we had discussed on this one last time, correct?
Yeah, we, I mean, they went over the, the requested, um, relief, uh, from a number of, um, subdivision control requirements, uh, which we knew was coming. Put a note on the plan that, I believe that's already there to the effect that there'll be no, no, they will not be able to request, uh, acceptance at town meeting until the road comes into full compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations. I mean, that would be pavement, pavement with, you know, curbs, sidewalks, the whole,
Yeah.
the whole shebang. Uh, I mean, we, we went through that already.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would, at this point, I would just make a motion that we, uh, have town council review the, the easement, uh, that allows that property owner in the end to utilize, the first section of the subdivision road, the second section of it. Well, actually, you know, it should even include the, uh, the turnaround, I suppose, but, uh, let's have town council review,
Okay.
uh, the easement, and if they're satisfied with it, and I'm satisfied with the proposal myself, I.
Do you have a copy of the easement, or?
Yeah.
You got that?
Yeah.
So, you can handle that?
Yep.
Take care of that?
Absolutely.
No challenges, anybody poke on, anybody like to speak about it while we're here?
Just have a question regarding, uh, the four lots, can they further be divided later?
No.
Can each owner now say, I wanna divide it to a, to another lot?
No.
No.
Okay. And this road is a common way for three lots or for four lots, how is, how did that get, what's the final determination on that?
These are for all four lots plus access to the large parcel of land on the backside there. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Any questions, miss?
It does, and just the last concern is that, that last hundred feet that I brought up last meeting, where it's, it's not going to be, according to what they mentioned, is not part of the home association. I don't know if that was, if I was very clear, and then what happens to that hundred feet there?
The rear property owner will continue to be able to utilize that in the same fashion that they're utilizing it right now.
The whole road, okay.
Yeah.
And maintain.
I mean, they'll actually, that, that rear, that rear property owner will actually, actually gonna get relieved from maintenance of probably close to a thousand feet of, uh, of gravel driveway. So.
Is that how far that is from the?
Uh, it's, it's quite a ways.
Yeah.
I mean, it's eight, what, eight hundred, a thousand feet, something like that?
I wanna say the total length of the road is, um, eleven hundred and seventy-three feet.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else, any other questions? Everybody sappy, gentlemen?
Um, I would make a motion that we approve the subdivision as presented, subject to approval of the easement, uh, by town council.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Uh, at that point, I would make another motion that we close the public hearing portion of this, uh, and then just proceed on to the, uh, the administrative aspects of, of processing the subdivision.
To a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous again.
There you go.
And, uh, and on the administrative side of things, uh, I wanted some, the applicant had a question on, um, the Form D covenant. Uh, he was, uh, requesting to have one of the lots, lot three, be released, um, upon approval and after the appeal period, uh, to generate funds to, uh, build the road and do the road construction, and have the town hold the, uh, the rest of the land, um, as it would be per the standing covenant. So, I wonder if the board had any, uh?
I mean, you can, you can take that up after, after the approval happens, rather than right now.
Okay.
Let's get past the easement and
Okay.
into, uh, get the thing into the town clerk for the twenty-one-day appeal period.
Okay, great.
We're not quite there yet.
Yep. And the other question on that is, is, um, when we generate the final MyLars, are you gonna send the letter of, uh, over to the town clerk? I was wondering if we would be submitting those, those final MyLars at, on, at the next meeting? Or would that be something we could submit prior to that, if, if we hit that appeal period?
It'll have to get signed at the next meeting, so, we'll work on that.
I guess it depends on town council, what town council says, that would have to be put into the MyLot?
What's that?
For the easement?
The easement?
I mean, it's gonna have to be filed along with the, the subdivision.
Sure.
I mean, that's, um, I didn't say that in a motion, but it's, that's the way it's gonna have to be, I mean, unless they both get filed at the same time, you know, with the appropriate, uh, registry information.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think any building permits can be issued on that road, so.
Right. And I was just more concerned with when, when we would be, we will be bringing, if we meet the, uh, the twenty-one-day appeal period, we can bring the MyLars in for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Is the question, yeah, okay.
Correct. Gentlemen, anything else? Anybody else from the audience? With that, you make this, you wanna, that motion is to?
We had a motion to approve, subject to acceptance of the easement.
You had another one about the continuation, or?
Well, we can, we can, yeah, we'll have to, I mean, it doesn't seem like at this point that we need to actually hold the, the public, uh, hearing open any longer. I mean, we're, we're down to some final administrative things.
Yep.
So, I mean, I would,
Close a public hearing?
That was one motion that we basically closed the public hearing portion of the subdivision, and, and then, uh, vote, a motion to approve, subject to the easement being acceptable to town council. I think, I think we're there.
Okay.
Just a matter of now getting a letter from town council, uh, that they accept it, or that they want some changes made, which hopefully the lawyers can get together and
Yeah.
revise it, so that it's ready for the next, uh, ready for signature and submission to town clerk for the twenty-one-day appeal period.
Any other questions? So, excuse me, the twenty-one day appeal period starts?
After we sign them all.
After the next meeting? After we sign the MyLot.
At, and after that easement is approved, we're not gonna sign the MyLot until the, until we, so it's gonna at least be another meeting. Hopefully, the easement, uh, issue can be resolved by then, and then we would be ready to sign it, I would say, at the next, at the next meeting.
I think, if I, if I understand it correctly, doesn't the decision go to the town clerk, and then that is what can be appealed?
That is a good question, but it's not, it's, I mean, the thing is, we haven't finished everything yet, we haven't finished the easement. Um, I don't, I don't think we're ready to, I mean, you, uh, good question.
It's, I believe it's the acceptance after the twenty-one-day appeal period.
Yeah, cause if I come in with, yeah, yeah, cause it's, yes, cause the town clerk will stamp it, and then.
And then wait for the twenty days or twenty-one days, whichever.
Right.
That's correct.
And hopefully, that should align with the next meeting, so that you guys can then sign the MyLars, and then, I mean, the lawyer should be able to work out.
Hopefully, that's the way it should be.
Yeah. Be open for whatever happens, we could be ready for it.
Okay, wanna, wanna put them on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yep.
The eighteenth of November?
Who did the eighteenth cut? Otherwise, we begin at Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, we don't wanna get into the holidays.
Yeah, no.
No approvals during the holidays. Can't build anything, anyway.
With that, you're all set?
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Next thing, if you flip your paper over, your agenda over, we have zone, well, I'll give it, planner update, well.
Transfer of development rights.
Yep, so we have two zoning bylaws on the, or one zoning bylaw on this bylaw.
Special resident, special residential development and transfer of development rights?
Yes.
Do we have to, uh, set a public hearing for both of these?
Um.
I believe so.
Uh, yeah, we, we are gonna have to set a public hearing date for this, um, I just wanted general, uh, also to gather general feedback from the, the board on the language and thoughts and opinions on it.
I will need a little time to read this.
Yeah, I mean, this is a pretty all-inclusive document, so, I mean, I, I can't read it tonight.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to watch me for a half an hour, go through it. Now, what, is, is there some particular parcel in town that, that is being looked at?
Um, not necessarily, I think it's just in consideration for moving forward. Um, also, I've talked a little bit about like where the special residential development, um, bylaw is gonna be focused, which will be down near the waterfront area, um, near the Titleist factory in the Business Village District, uh, to start out. Um, I think it's gonna work in relation to that, if a project does come in and, and happen over there.
Which bylaw are you talking about?
The special residential development.
Okay.
So, these are, they wanna put?
So, I mean, the thought, the thought is to try and look at something to redevelop the.
They wanna put in development, where the Titleist property was just.
Yeah.
More or less, yeah, in that area.
Right.
No, I'd have to redevelop, I don't know how, how the whole thing done.
This is, uh, like, this special residential development is called, it's, it's, they're looking to blanket the whole town with this written document.
That has not been my impression, I've been working with Jim on this. Uh, so the language, the language isn't finalized yet, I still need to talk to, uh, town council about it.
Yep. Hell, we have a fifty-five and over, right?
Yep.
Uh, it's not set at fifty-five and over, um, from the conversations I've had with them, they're gonna be leaving it all-inclusive instead of fifty-five and over.
Is that different than the version that I, what, what's the date of the, cause the one I've read?
That should be the same one.
Nine one twenty-one? Cause the one I, I ha, I don't know if I got it off the website, or?
Uh, it's not, I, I sent you the same one I have.
Because this is, um, where did I read it, it's, it talks about, this would be applied to the entire, every district.
I believe you are correct.
And that's, that means the whole town, I mean, so.
Yeah, but it has to be within, uh, they have to have a twenty-five acre parcel, I think that was, I noted that.
Five to twenty-five acres, but here's the, here's the problem, and I, I got all kinds of notes on this, just from glancing at it once, that the way this is written, takes the retreat lot bylaw, throws it out the window, and allows somebody with a retreat lot, fifty feet of frontage, I know a retreat lot only needs forty, but if you can grab another ten feet somewhere, or maybe you have fifty feet, and allows that retreat lot to now get up to twenty-five units or something like that.
I, I think we all have to read, uh, this is, I think there might be some revisions.
Yeah, no, that's, this is not the final draft, it's not, we're, I don't think we're at a point where we need to set a public hearing.
So, we're not even really ready to set a public hearing?
Yeah, no, it's more to gather your feedback on it, that was my mistake, gather your feedback on it and language, and I still need to take it over to, um, town council.
Yeah. And what's the next one, transfer of developing rights?
Yes.
CD bylaw, is that a whole different thing?
Uh, yes, it kinda works hand in hand with this as well.
Okay.
That one, I'm gonna need a interpreter.
Yeah.
When I started reading this.
How'd you get it so quick?
I asked him.
Yeah, he emailed me.
It's on the, on the agenda, I said, what is this? So, I read it quickly last night, and.
Well, I tried to get here to get it, but we got messed up with Rick not being.
I don't understand.
Yeah, I messed it up.
No, you didn't mess it up, cause I should've got here yesterday, but we had all the wind and crap and everything, so.
This one's a drag, as to what it really means.
More or less, that's been more of Jim working on that one, um, we've both been working on them together, but, so essentially, it's, it's gonna work like, to be a little bit more lenient with certain properties, if they have another section of town where they own property, if they give that to the town.
Or they wanna buy it, and.
Yeah, yeah, they, they can do a conservation restriction, and, and I like the concept, but there's, there's nothing in here that defines what it actually means. Let's say, for instance, you have a twenty-acre farm up on, uh, you know, North Main Street, and they're gonna put it all in a conservation restriction, but you could theoretically get forty units out of it. Does that mean somebody can take forty units and go put it on a three, four acre parcel, because it's close to town and has sewer? There's no numbers that go with it, it's open-ended?
Yep.
And that's what's, that's the first thing you struck me, is that there's no, there's no formula or anything, it doesn't.
What's this maximum number of dwelling unit permits? I just saw that the project is being served by public water, this number would be five, and if additional served by public sewer, this would be eight. So, you have to have water or sewerage or both? I have to finish reading it, I just, we just rinsed it through.
Uh, you know, I, I'd say, let's just schedule some time at the next meeting
Okay.
for a discussion of these two things, and that'll give us all a chance to
To read it.
read it a little more closely, and.
Phenomenal, any other planner updates?
Uh, yep, we need a, like, I mentioned earlier, we need to have the joint meeting with the, um, board of selectmen to appoint a new member. Um, so if you guys have any dates that work better for you, I know they're, they hold their meetings usually at four o'clock.
Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me at this point.
Do we all have to be here, or we just have?
Uh, from what I understand, yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a vote, it requires a vote, I, we went through this before. It requires a, a vote from each of the planning board members and each of the board of selectmen. And, um, so, if there are four planning board members that want somebody, well, then it doesn't, the selectmen don't matter, because they've only got three votes and we've got four.
Okay.
I remember, I remember going through, I'm, I'm being a little light, a little, uh, I'm joking about it, but it's, it's not a joke, I mean, that's the procedure.
Yeah.
Each person gets a vote, and, uh.
Unless they wanna come to one of our meetings.
I don't mind, I mean, that's, that's fine, I mean, that's when they're used to getting together.
Yep.
It doesn't matter to me whether it's four o'clock or eight o'clock.
You won't be able to? Okay, what, what time usually works?
Like, the time we have, I mean,
Six-thirty.
I mean, I'm up in Attleboro, uh, working, it's kinda tough to get down here.
Yeah.
I can start talking to their office a little bit and have a date, and then talk to Mark and.
Yeah, see if they can do, you know, put us at the tail end of their agenda or something like that.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll try to get everybody here for six-thirty.
Okay, that works out. Um, and mail was just notices from other towns.
Boy of appeals from other towns?